First meeting. You got a big crowd, you.
What's that?
You got a big crowd, you draw.
Right. Hey, we're calling for the regular city council meeting for the city of Nisswa. Uh, to order January seventeenth, if everyone please join me in the. A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic of Louisiana, the sands. Well, I'm engaged on the ground. The individual people. The city's investment as well. First item that we must do is approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, second item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
I will also make a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Open forum, I see no one in the public, so. We can dispense with open forum for the night. Uh, reports, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan. Good evening, members of the council. I have my written report to you this evening. Um, giving some updates on some of our project work and also a couple of legislative updates, which things are. Um, kicking off in the legislature here this month. Uh, otherwise, I don't have anything in addition unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the city administrator? Any none? Thank you. City attorney.
Uh, good evening, mayor and everyone. Um, quickly on Gull Lake Trail, we are mid-January now and. Uh, although you got briefed in December, but where we are with some of those, um, certain, uh, properties. Uh, we have begun, um, to draft condemnation petitions for the ones that are not resolved yet in anticipation of getting those things filed. You know, the beginning of the month, so we can stay on track for our timing. Uh, we've been careful in our recent letter that Jenny wrote to make sure people understand that although we may have to start that process, it doesn't mean we can't continue to negotiate and. And hopefully get all those things purchased by the direct purchase process, but. Uh, we've gotta, you know, continue to keep things on the move with the court action to say that's always a little bit of a dicey proposition with people, but. Anyway, we're moving, uh, toward the, um. The same goals as we discussed with you in December. I don't have anything else.
Would it make? With the people that haven't made up their mind yet or haven't gotten back to you yet, the properties that are still limbo, would it make a difference if we had a meeting here? And invited them all to come? Would that, your opinion, make a difference or not?
Mayor Ryan, if I could, uh, in one letter specifically, um, we did address that or provide that opportunity.
Okay.
Because I think that's important for, for them to have that opportunity. Um, you know, if they don't reach out to us, that's, it's a challenge to get. Some feedback because we're, you know, we're certainly open to having a conversation if they'd like to address the council. We can definitely do that.
Okay. Thanks. Does anyone have any questions for Tom? City engineer?
Uh, good afternoon, uh, good evenings, mayor and council member. I don't have anything right now, but, um, probably have some questions later.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, new business, winter jubilee committee special event permit. Looks like everything is as it usually is. That's for some questions if we can get a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the, um, special permits, uh, permit application. For the Nisswa winter jubilee parade fun and schedule as attached.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Here. Request from the Brainerd J C's to close the Gull Lake public access. This is the one on Woodward Avenue. Uh, as it goes down to Gull Lake. Does anyone have any questions about this? This is something that they ask, um, for. Uh, usually on an annual basis, we've had it closed in the past, we've had it opened in the past. Last year. It happened at the very last minute. And it didn't go over very well with a lot of the public. We asked them to get it into a sooner. My only question on it is, do we know that the event will actually take place? On the, the date that they're asking for? Because we don't know if that's been approved by the sheriff's office yet.
Um, I haven't heard anything myself. Um, obviously if the event doesn't happen, we wouldn't. Close the access.
Right. But then we're back to. Then kind of, I'm just trying to figure out what. If there's anything we could do to. If we're, you know, everyone, whatever everybody wants to do. Um, there's been safety issues on the ice before I've been out there with them. Uh, the road that's plowed gets a lot of traffic, it's cracked before and water has come up and it's created a bit of a problem. And you can get a lot of people out there and the ice conditions, the way they are this year, I don't think it's very thick yet. So. You know, but then there are also other people that want to go out. And they don't go to the extravaganza, they go out to their fish houses, out down the, the west point out there or whatever, so. Um, my only other question is, who's gonna man it? And if we're gonna block it off. Do we have an officer down there to do that and then get reimbursed? From the J C's that we have done in the past, I believe.
That has happened in the past. Um, this year's request, um, staff has suggested that, uh, we place a large trailer or a piece of heavy equipment in front of the access. And the J C's have indicated that they would have Grandview staff or their event staff. There to monitor activity, um, so they did not specifically ask for police officer presence, not that an officer who's on duty can't. Um, check in and make sure things are going okay and have a contact that way, but, um, certainly that that's the council's. Interest to have somebody staffed, we would just need to know that or have a motion indicating that. Um, but that's not what they asked for this year, but yes, in the past, we've done it and we've charged them for it.
Okay. It does need to be removable though. That's where we bring in ambulances on and off.
Boy, yeah.
And stuff, so I mean, we can't just completely block it, not have it.
Right, and I think the D N R blocks or closes the other access on the other end.
Right.
Yeah, there, there would have to be, they'll have it manned. Whatever they have there, it has to be removed, yeah.
And it is a snowmobile trap. It's small.
Well, it sounds like, um, you would wanna have it blocked off to avoid too many cars going onto the ice, especially this year. With ice being dicey, so if they decide not to do it, then this is moot. But if we do, say like, if we were to say, if they do go through with this, if the sheriff approves it, then.
Well, it'll be on those days if the sheriff gives the.
Right.
Okay.
I would.
Sure, can you come up, Tom?
Please.
You guys are at, you, uh, bringing ambulances through Grandview to get to the contest rather than the main access?
We've gone both ways, depending upon where the injury has been out there. We've, we've gone both directions with people.
Okay, because we were just planning on parking a large equipment trailer there and picking it back up by. Sunday morning or Monday morning.
Right. Yeah, so, so, I don't know, two years ago, we had a couple incidences where we went off the ice that direction, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, as far as just like leaving a heavy piece of equipment saying enough's enough. If something does occur. You know, God forbid, you know, a vehicle went through or something, we would have to move it to get, you know, it can't. Can't be just like a heavy piece of equipment to pull the keys out of it and walk away.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Do we know where they? I mean, I think it's a good deal to block it off for sure, but I think, you know, it's.
It's.
You know, with the fire department out there, whatever, we got, we still have to be able to access it, go on and off because. You know, just because the fishing contest is going on, people outside the contest have gotten hurt, we've had to go help people. Couple of years ago, the ice broke up out there and we barricaded that off right when it started. A Grandview van almost went through the ice there, broke up. So, the date of the event.
It's possible to have a fire truck parked there? To block it?
Um. Uh. Yes and no, the only thing with parking a fire truck there is, you know, can't have it freeze.
Right.
And so, the other rigs that don't have the water in, we're already utilizing them out on the ice and stuff, and so. Just to have one of the other tenders or engines sitting there, we can't. Just have it sit there all day, it'll freeze up on us.
Is there any way that? This equipment trailer, what's it gonna take to move it?
A one ton truck.
So Grandview could move it.
We, yeah, we would just need something that we could move right away, I mean.
I'd grab, you could actually park a truck there with it. Probably even keep it hooked up, and if you had to move it, boom, jump in the truck.
That or, you know, some sort of gates, barricades, signs that, you know, could be slid out of the way.
Yeah, that's what's always been in the past.
We could put barricades there too, simply, the only, the only reason we didn't think of doing that is because in the past, things like that get moved.
Right.
But if you wanna be able to go in and out, then that's probably our only option.
Because they will have vendors. That go in and out of there too.
Grand, that's the road Grandview uses for all their vendors, so I don't know what Grandview's plan is to get themselves out there.
Yeah, that's what they generally do. They put, they go out there, um, and some of them will park a vehicle out on the ice further, and then they will just drop the stuff at that vehicle and get out of there. And then that's the vehicle they shuttle things with, Lee J does that.
Right.
So.
No, I don't disagree, I think it gets pretty busy, it gets a lot of extra vehicles out there that aren't necessary. I'm opposed, I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to blocking it by any means, it's just.
It's safety.
Yeah, for safety, for the fire department, everybody. We, we utilize that every year too, to get back and forth. So I don't know, it's just probably the right barricade, the right vehicle or. Getting the right people, the right keys or access to move something. So barricades with personnel?
I think barricades is what I'm planning on. I don't have personnel, I can have out there all day for that.
Right.
Well, didn't Grandview say that they would have personnel out there to monitor?
The J C's said they would have either some, someone from Grandview or the event.
Yeah, alright, so then we wouldn't have to have city personnel.
manipulate that.
Right.
Condition that they have people out there.
If city personnel are gonna be there, we need to be reimbursed.
Right. But they won't have to be there if.
No, they don't have to. Grandview has people they can put there, always have.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Entertained a motion?
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the request by the Bernard J C's to close the Gull Lake public access. Um, to be then barricaded and monitored by Grandview staff.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carry. Uh, next is the temporary liquor license for the Bernard J C's, this is the divine event. They have at Grandview.
I have no questions on the matter.
Any questions on anything? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary liquor license for the Bernard J C's divine event at Grandview Lodge.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here. Uh, and this is, next item is the approving county project within the municipal corporate limits, this is twenty-nine and three seventy-one. I did ask Jenny if there was any. City. City money that was needing to put up any, and there isn't, so this is just them getting an approval that. They need from us.
I move that we go ahead and approve the, uh. Uh, consent resolution. Or, let's see, where is this? Or the, um. Oh, the county project within a municipal corporate limits as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Um, instruction and cost share maintenance agreement. The SAW seventy-seven trail.
This is, thank you, Mayor, and this is, um, pretty standard. Um, agreement that the, uh, counter requests, uh, from local municipalities when we do projects. Um, just outlining whose responsibility is for, uh, maintenance and, and work that needs to be done for the project. Um, the city will maintain. Um, the cost, uh, construction costs and then future maintenance costs associated with the trail.
Any questions for anyone? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the construction cost share and maintenance agreement for CSAW seventy-seven trail as presented.
I'll second that.
No further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Next item is the council approval for the construction cost share maintenance agreement. Between Crow Wing County and the city of Nisswa for the intersection improvements at. The SAW seventy-seven in Nikomas Avenue. The roundabout.
Yes, the roundabout project, so this is, uh, similar as the trail, um, agreement that you just approved, uh, there is some county responsibility for. The maintenance of the roundabout itself, but then any extension off of the roundabout would be city, um, maintenance requirements. And then we will follow up with Grandview or with the city attorney to draft an agreement for them to maintain the interior of the roundabout, which is what they have requested.
Now, is Grandview looking at putting signage in the middle of the roundabout?
No, they will not be able to do that.
Good.
Is it similar to the roundabout that we have? I don't, I just don't believe I've seen a design or a mockup from Grandview, and this is, I guess, more so a curiosity now that they're gonna be. Playing ball within the. Within the climate of the rules, but, um. Is it similar to how our one roundabout is over here, just a couple of trees?
I, I think it will be, uh, fairly simple in design, um, council member Hall might be able to speak to that, we, we've talked. Uh, quite a while ago about ideas and worked through some of the. Options that the county would, um, agree to allow, since it's their roundabout on their road, they wanna make sure there's certain parameters to follow, and I. I think Grandview has a good understanding of what that is, and, and so I think it'll be fairly simple, grass, flowers every year, things like that, maybe some trees.
Sure.
Um, similar to our roundabout here in town.
And I just can't remember, what was the, uh, decision on pedestrian crossing?
Uh, there.
They're in there.
Yeah, yes, we will have a pedestrian crossing, uh, I forget what it's called, but it's.
West side?
West side, I mean, you can speak to it, Joe, but I believe it's on the west side with flashing.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I couldn't remember.
Rapid. Flashing beacons.
Beacons, yeah.
That come out of that.
Yep, yep.
So there's a crossing on the west side like, uh, George indicated, there's also a crossing, uh, going from, uh, west to east.
Okay.
On the.
Yep.
Grand inside. And that was enlarged for the snowmobile, uh, uh, brawler. Twelve feet so that, because it's trouble, so they could pick that up too.
Okay.
Did the county ever resolve the tree issue though, for the record? Do we know?
For what?
For that, are they, are they truly gonna allow the trees in there or not? Do we know that resolution yet?
Yes, I believe they, they will, yes.
Blowout?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a height restriction?
Minimum, yeah, there'll, there'll be minimum requirements on that, I believe. I, you know, that's the document that has to be drawn up with, or you have with.
And then. They, they will allow it, they will wanna make sure that we're not planting a tree that will grow. Forty feet in the air or something, so as long as we're mindful of that, I think they're okay with it.
Uh, they did take out one of the, um, the, uh. The write-off coming out of the golf course side of Grandview. They took that out. Yes, it's just gonna be a, uh.
Oh, is that?
It's just a write-on.
How it's established right now.
Into the golf course coming from, uh, three seventy-one.
Right.
But you can't leave that way, they're gonna travel everybody around, uh, uh, to lower lake, yeah, to that lower lake road entrance that comes out, the golf course parking area through there.
Sure.
They want that, that was not a request of us, that was a request of, uh, Tom Duviano.
They've been doing that for about the last three years, so.
Yeah, they put that up.
Okay. Other questions?
So the motion tonight is just to move ahead or, you know, to grant the county to move ahead, that we have no opposition to that?
Just agreeing to the cost split, so who's responsible for the future maintenance? Um, presumably that the roundabout is constructed this summer, um, but then we'll know who's responsible for that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve construction cost share and maintenance agreement for the, uh, County Road seventy-seven roundabout.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, okay, now the first of the amended items, this is the Bobcat, this is, uh, purchase of. The compact wheel loader. Um, if, if anyone has any questions, you look down, you can see we're getting trade-in on, um. The, uh. But, or the skid steer, that, there's a skid steer being traded in. Um, against the cost, so. Looking at. I'm trying to follow it.
So you're looking at a total cost of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-six cents?
Yeah.
Correct. Is that correct, Tom? Okay.
I, I only have one question on it, not. Two perhaps, uh, one. Is the current machine. Palm right now that we have. And the one that we want to obtain for future use, do you want it to be tire-based instead of track?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, and then my only other one is, do we currently have a radio in the machine that we have now?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Uh, my stance with our machines that we purchase, we, uh, we more or less lean to not, we elect to not have the radios within the machines. Based off distractions, obvious reasons, um. But I only asked if it's in it now, I'm sure it's respected. Especially if you haven't had issues.
No, we haven't had any issues in. Fifteen years that I'm aware of.
I'm good with it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, one quick question with the tires, those are just standard log? Do you want that versus a snow tire? Yeah, because that, that tire is just a standard log, and, you know, they're not very good on snow and ice.
I guess we didn't specify, I don't believe, Mike didn't ask for anything different.
Yeah.
Even, even our current skid loader, we have just the standard. Bar tires, they're not the, you know, they're not a snow tire.
Right.
I think they were worried about. Um. Hurting on bare pavement with it a lot, and snow tires are usually a softer compound.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, I don't, whatever you guys wanna use it for, but I didn't know if that had been overlooked or if that's what you wanted.
No, we've talked about in the past about getting us a different set of rims and tires, even for this, for the Bobcat certain years, but. Um, where this thing's gonna live a lot of its life in the winter time. Is loading salt sand.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Go. That's it, looks good.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions for Tom? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Or did we do that already? No, we didn't do that yet.
I make a motion that we move ahead with the purchase of the. Bobcat L eighty-five wheel loader.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Number eight, Fort Worth would set to facilitate bid processing for Gull Lake Trail.
I can quickly address this one, um, our city engineer was doing his accounting due diligence, and, uh, as. As things happen that take a few years' time, we kind of forget some of the details, and the council had omitted. The bidding component of the original quote from Woodseth, uh, back in twenty-twenty-one, um, and so as we have approved them to. Go out and bid the trail project, we wanna make sure that, uh, that cost is being taken care of, and so this is. Um, their quote, it's the same quote as it was from twenty-twenty-one, just with the updated. Uh, current rates for their staff, so there wasn't any change, so that's correct, Joe? Same quote, yeah. So. Uh, and this will be split with Lake Shore.
Okay.
What is that split that will be?
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty?
Yeah.
This is housekeeping. Okay. Any further questions, Tom?
As part of this, is it overseen for final payment then? And stuff? You know, like. Who's? Says, you know, that. List off that you're selecting the contract, you know, comparing apples to apples, so to speak, but. You know, um, what's in agreement with Woodseth or whoever? You know, to monitor the project, kind of the end to say, hey, it was complete, final project, final payment. Do we have a separate documentation for that, or is that part of this?
Construction services at that time, you get to go into construction. Once we get the bid, does that mean?
Yeah, so, I guess that's my question, is there gonna be another proposal from Woodseth for that aspect of it, or is that part of the original? Am I making sense, everybody?
No, there, there will, we will, we will have a, uh, and, uh, a proposal for that work if you decide to move forward with the job a- after bidding. If the job is let and you decide not to, that's, we had pulled that out before. Um, so that you, you don't, you're not, you know, you're, you're holding to. If you want to, and then, and then at that point, you'd move, we'd move forward with the proposal for you for the, uh, construction service.
Yes, so are there any more proposals other than that one then, that would still be coming forward on the project?
For us?
Yeah, I figured, yes. So just this one and then the oversight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Generally all jobs designed, uh, preliminary, preliminary concept, there's usually a fee for that, we do. And then we'll go into design, there'll be a fee for that, preliminary in that, and then we go to. Most of the times we do tie in the bidding to the, uh, to the design. We didn't do that this time. Just a separate item, and then we'll go into construction services if the, if the, if the, uh, proposal is accepted by them.
Yeah, and I guess that was my question, you know, does, uh, is that already part of the process, you know, was this the only one missed or are there more to come?
We, we also, that's also, that cost is also factored into the project costs that we give when we go through and do an estimate. So that's in there too.
Okay.
So it, it's, it's not like. Here's your cost of your project, five million dollars, now, now plus one million that you didn't know about first.
Any further questions for Joe? Go, go there. Other than.
City engineer.
I think, yeah.
He's probably Joe Smalling.
Probably been one Joe for a while, so I think he used that.
I will make a motion to approve the quote from Woodseth for twelve thousand, two hundred dollars to facilitate the bid process for the Gull Lake Trail to be split fifty-fifty with the city of Lake Shore.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. There is no old business, um, council reports. Um, I just wanna let everyone know, and for the record, that we lost a piece of Nisswa history last week. Um, Joy Potoff, who was married to Fritz Potoff, who was the owner of the, um. Mini Wawa Lodge passed away. Um, if. Fascinating story, and a really, really neat lady. And I just we're losing those old timers. And so if you know of anyone, that's dated history, you might want to get with them and talk to them about some of the way things were in the past, and one thing with Joy, I found out and talking, you know, talking with her family and stuff and whatnot, was that her generation could certainly teach the modern generation what diversity and what a problem is. Problems we seem to have today pale in comparison, so, but I just wanted people to know that that happens, so.
And, and, and Joy and Fritz were very instrumental in the History Center here in town, I know Fritz used to spend many days there and Joy also throughout the summer, when people come and ask questions. And, and, and the family heirloom loom was almost donated there, but now it went down to the Historical Society of Minnesota.
Which is, what is it?
It's a loom, weaving loom that was passed down from generation to generation, generation. Yeah, it was originally built in Sweden. And Joy was the last one to have it. So, and she wove on it. She was my mother-in-law, by the way. So she will be missed.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry for your loss. Is anyone else, Joe?
The Pickle Pond Hockey League started off last week successfully. We had some snow on the ice, but it was the best turnout we've had yet. Speaking with Amber, there are some equipment issues that I know that we need to address, dollars are always a part of it, but we do have some volunteers that have come to light to take a full part-time, full part-time position to maintain the rink, so. If anybody's looking for a reason to get out on a Wednesday night between six and eight P M, and watch some adults make fun of themselves, fools of themselves. We'll be there in the pickle after for a picture of the Golden Light.
Do you wear skates or boots?
Oh, skates, maybe play pipes, so no pads, that's optional. But about thirty-five, forty people so far, so it's good turnout.
Good.
That's all I have.
I, I've spent some time with Amber today and before in preparation for the council priorities at the end of the month, I encourage you, if you haven't talk to your department heads that you liaise on with and the committees, so that you can see if you're on the same page as to what the priorities are. So that we can have a fuller picture of where we're at.
Very good. Is that it? Okay, I will maintain, or I will stand for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
No, second. All in favor? We stand adjourned.